1-9-5-5-0. But before we jump into it, let's do the pledge and then we will get right into it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, we're gonna try not to keep everybody too long. We'll go right down to item C. I'm gonna change it up just a little bit and we'll go down to bid number 1-8. 1-9-5-0. Mr. Joe Paul, you wanna come on up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. You have in front of you the memo for the bids for the mobile homes. I would request that you approve these low bidders. Showcase Homes Direct was low bidder on the two-bedroom, two-bath, three-bedroom, two-bath, four-bedroom, two-bath, four-bedroom, two-bath double-wide. Timberline Construction Group was the low bidder on the one-bedroom, one-bath. Ironwood Homes was the low bidder on the one-bedroom, one-bath handicap. That means it's handicap accessible doors, showers, everything. They were also low bidder on the two-bedroom, one-bath handicap, the two-bedroom, two-bath handicap, and the three-bedroom, two-bath handicap. Okay? The modular homes, life homes, was the low bidder on the two-bedroom, one-bath and the three-bedroom, two-bath modular home. I would request that you approve and accept these bids.
All right, any questions for Mr. Paul? All right, well, I entertain a motion that we accept the bid.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. You got anything you wanna add, Mr. Ham?
I just want, for the board's information, for the one we'll be most interested in, the one-bedroom, the setup price, what was that?
Thirty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. That's delivered, set up, hooked up to water sewer. And I was pleased to get that under our cap, too.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. I got a motion by Commissioner Macron, second by Commissioner Rich. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Please, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On your, Mr. Paul, good evening. On your two-bedroom, one-bath.
Two-bedroom, one-bath handicap?
No, just standard two-bedroom, one-bath. There's not one there.
There's not one on there, sir. There's a two-bedroom, one-bath handicap.
Handicap.
And then you got a two-bedroom, one-bath modular at the bottom.
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
Forty-nine-nine.
Forty-six, no, here's one.
Yeah, forty-six.
Showcase, yeah.
Forty-six-nine, forty-seven thousand dollars on the two-bedroom, two-bath. All right, I'm just curious on that, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. Any questions? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public on this bid? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passes, five and oh, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. All right, HHRP funding applications. Mr. Joe Paul, you wanna open us up before we start?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, on behalf of Ms. Lynn Lanier and myself, I wanna thank you for allowing us to continue to work in this program. It's been a very exciting time for us since we received these applications on the 30th of September. I do want to let everyone in the public know, and I don't have to remind you Commissioners, but I do wanna let you know that we will be doing rehabilitation in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for the extremely low and very low. We will be doing a trailer for forty thousand dollars, a one-bedroom, one-bath trailer, which is what this board agreed on. For the low income, we will be doing a rehabilitation maximum of twenty-five thousand dollars. Down payment assistance, maximum of fifty thousand dollars, not to exceed fifty percent of the cost of the home. On moderate income, we will be doing no rehabilitation. We will be doing purchase assistance only, sixty thousand dollars maximum, not to exceed fifty percent of the home. Okay, once we draw today and finish, you have the list before you of the constituents in your area. They are divided up by income levels, and it's grand total at the bottom of how much each one of your districts has. We will be announcing that as we go through. We will pull all 170 names so that everyone knows where they are and what their numbers are. Once the number is pulled, Ms. Lanier will have it on her sheet, and we'll have a master sheet that we can provide to you on Monday, who is first, second, third, fourth, fifth, et cetera, in your district and each income category. I want to personally thank Ms. Shirley Jenkins for coming and as one of our constitutional officers to be our person drawing the numbers today. We will be drawing in district order, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Yeah, if you look on your very last page, you'll find three numbers back there. These three individuals were not living in Gulf County at the time of the storm.
Were not?
Not. They were not living in Gulf County at the time of the storm. Per your mandate, they had to be a resident of Gulf County on October 10th, 2018, to qualify. Those three numbers will not be in the drawing today. That's the only three out of the 170. It will not be physically drawn and a name attached to them today.
All right.
Any questions, sir?
Only question I have, Mr. Paul, is just make sure you explain to the people. We only got a set amount of money at this time.
Yes, sir, that's my next.
Okay, go ahead.
Next thing, sir.
Okay.
I wanna be sure and let the public know that as we go through this and you hear the numbers that were given out for the total number of monies that we could expend, on your list, we have proposed the maximum amount so that we could arrive at a figure. The figures could change based on what it takes to get the home done. I wanna let everyone know that there are two other pots of money that we are expecting. When, I can't tell you. I don't know if you have any info or not. I couldn't get any. I tried to call my contact at DEO and couldn't get him on the phone today, so I don't really know. But the key is hypothetically, we'll say there's 10 people on the list in your category, whichever district it might be, and we can only service five of them with the funds we have. Then number six will be number one on the next pot of money that comes in. And it would continue till all the pots of money are here and everything's gone. So I don't want people to think if they don't get drawn that they're out of it, there's two other pots of money that they could get assistance from. And I believe the board's intention and the county's intention are to assist everyone that we possibly can with the funding that's available and coming. Currently in the bank of the 5.915 million that we have been allocated for this drawing, we have 3.3 million dollars already in the bank. So based on qualifications, we can actually start as early as maybe right after Thanksgiving, giving some of this money out, getting some things in place. Also, on your list, and for the public's knowledge, there are a lot of lines there where you see items that people have not turned in to us to complete their applications. We will be calling them and have been calling them to let them know what they need to complete their applications. It's hard. A lot of folks lost their social security cards. They've had to order a new one. Takes two weeks to get one. A lot of folks have lost their award letters for social security. And we've had to estimate their income based on that, based on what shows in their bank account, even though in some cases that's not their gross amount, which we are required to use. I also wanna let you know that in doing this and in going through these applications, there are several people on there that have not qualified as being over income. That's something that you, as a board, could take under consideration in future pots of money, where you have control, where Florida Housing basically had control of our set of sides here, of 30-30 and the balance and moderate. Any other questions for me?
The only question is, Mr. Joe Paul, just wanna let everybody know about the, how much, and once we pull these names, how long do they have to get the required documentation, what they're missing?
Once we pull their names, we'll notify them. They have 30 days to get the required documentation to us. If they don't have it in 30 days, and we already know that you can get your award letter and your social security card usually in two weeks in the mail. If after 30 days we don't have the required information, then we have no choice but to drop you and go to the next person on the list.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we be clear about, we got 30 days after, starting tomorrow. Unless you notify them.
And we'll be on the phone Monday, calling every one of them, telling them, "Hey, you're number two in District 2," or whatever, "and we need this stuff pretty quickly," and, you know, trying to get them coming as quick as we can. And we've done most of that already.
Okay, all right, you got anything you wanna add?
Just think, there's a couple moving parts. If they've lied on their application and they're not eligible, they'll be disqualified. If they can't, if they're in the moderate and they can't get a subsequent loan from the bank, they'll be disqualified if they run out of time. So that's the, we're going on to the next one. That's why we're drawing all the names. Some of them, I think your district is 25 in the low category. We're probably gonna have money for the first 10. But if five of those first 10 are disqualified, we'll go to the next. We'll go to 11 through 15. So that's how it'll work, and the same on the moderate end. We're gonna pay half, up to $60,000 on the moderate for these individuals. But if they can't get a bank loan for the balance, then they'll be disqualified and we'll go to the next category.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I know there's gonna be a lot of questions and our phones will be ringing. Mr. Paul, let me ask you a question here. Let's see, two-bedroom. I don't know, let me back up. All the trailers that will be purchased will be Zone 3 trailers. Am I correct there?
Yes, sir.
They have to meet all the county's stipulations on trailers.
Yes, sir.
All right, that's good, that's good. Now, we go up to the low and very low on the, with a trailer. What was the two-bed?
Okay, the low, sir.
Two-bath was what, 40 what? Forty-six-nine. No, that's two-bedroom, one-bath. Oh, that's handicap. No, we don't want that one.
The low, sir, is not, they can get purchase assistance or rehabilitation, which means they have to buy the trailer, which means they have to get a loan to buy one. They can buy it from us or they can buy it on their own.
So where these, where we buying it for forty-six-nine, let's just single in on this two-bedroom, two-bath. Okay, forty-six, nine-ninety-six. If they can find a trailer, I mean, a new trailer, the whole nine yards, for forty-two thousand dollars, can they go there? They gotta, because they're gonna have to add some money to it.
There's no restriction on where they can buy. They get their preapproval from their own lending institution. We are only gonna pay them up to half, not exceeding fifty thousand dollars for loan.
But on the very low, we hear we go up to forty thousand.
On very low, we are providing them a trailer for forty thousand dollars. That's the way it was.
But if they want a little more upgraded trailer, they will have to pay the difference of forty thousand, over forty thousand?
Yes, sir.
If they wanna go to a two-bedroom, and they found one for forty-one thousand, let's say they gotta cough up the other thousand dollars.
Right.
No, two-thousand, yeah, one thousand dollars.
But remember, when they do that, that trailer's not gonna be tax-free, and it may not be delivered and set up. This trailer's delivered, set up, and hooked up to water sewer. There may be instances where we've got plumbing problems or septic tank problems. You're gonna deal with that when it happens. This is, the thirty-nine thousand dollar one-bedroom is delivered, set up, and hooked up to water sewer.
I'm just, again, I'm not trying to beat them. Very low on a trailer, up to forty thousand.
Right, maximum of forty thousand.
Now, if they wanna step up to a bed, two-bedroom, and they pay the difference, then you saying then they'll be responsible for the hookup and all this?
Let me interject one second.
I'm a little gray spotty. People's asked me some questions on this.
Based on the board's deal, we have absolutely no purchase assistance for the very low. We gave them two options. They get rehab of up to 20,000, if they own their home, and they get a one-bedroom mobile home for 40,000. That's the only two options we have for the very low. They get a, and there's no mortgage, there's no strings. If they qualify, it's theirs from day one. There's no insurance requirements, there's none of the other things that all the other programs have. But they really only have two options. They have a, if they have a house that's rehab-able, blah, 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 that is fixable, in white city terms, if they have a house that can be rehabbed, we will give them up to 20,000 dollars. New roof, new floor, and handicap accessibility, all those type of things. Otherwise, the only other option they have is to get a one-bedroom mobile home for 40,000. That's based on your criteria.
All right, I'm scanning right here, Mr. Chairman. Just be patient with me here. This is not in the district I represent, but they're in the very low. And they've met all the qualifications and they fund granted amount up to 40,000 dollars. Okay, so they would qualify for a one-bedroom. But if they want to up, all I'm asking is question, if they want to step it up to a two-bedroom. They're in the very low now. They're gonna get 40,000. If they wanna step it up to a two-bedroom, put a little money with it, and do they still get the sewer hook up, the water hook up, is all they come off the table?
Based on your rules, we cannot do that, based on these rules. This was y'all's rules that said, "We're gonna give it away for free. We gotta keep it under 40." So they would not have the option. Because in order to meet this very low, they can't borrow any money. They can't get a mortgage. I mean, this is pretty very restrictive on the scale. I mean, some of these people are turning in, they're making seven hundred dollars a month. So they have, I mean, they barely make their light bill payment. So at the end of the day, we didn't put any, they're not putting up any money. They're not making any payments. It's just a free giveaway.
Give it to you.
No strings attached. When it's over, it's done.
Now, if they, now if they were in the low category, which is a little bit higher, like eighteen thousand or whatever, then they can do that. They can buy a three-bedroom trailer, and we'll pay half up to 50,000, based on your proposal. We'll also give a little more on the rehab side. But on the very low and the extremely low, it is a flat, you get a one-bedroom trailer, or we give you up to 20,000 dollars for rehab. And that's the only option. There are no other options about putting money with this money.
Okay, that, I'm, I'm.
Is that explained?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
But they have no obligations to meet.
That's correct. Once they're preapproved and we put them in, they're done.
Okay, okay.
There's no requirements for them to live in the house or anything. I mean, they sell it the next day, there's nothing we can do about it.
And no insurance requirements, because they cannot afford insurance. Most of these people don't bring in enough money to pay even the cheapest of insurances. And that's why we kept it at 40 and 20.
All right, is it, Mr. Joe Paul?
Sir?
You got anything else?
I'm good.
All right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Board, if you would notice, on page 2, under District 2, we had an applicant that I did not realize filled out two applications. So that applicant is at the top of the page, under very low income, application number 7 and number 169. I don't know why they had two applications, but they did. So we are going to mark out 169, and I've taken that one out of the list.
169. All right, so we're gonna scratch 169 there. Okay, it is, it's the same, same.
Okay, so you're going with 7 and leave 169 out, all right.
All right. All right, now, just so we can make sure we be clear. You will not hear number 1, 2, 3, 4, it's not gonna go like that in order. What they have done is, Mr. Joe Paul and Ms. Lynn, has labeled every application by the number. So every application has a number, some numbers 101, 105, 63, 7. So when that number comes out, if I'm right, Ms. Lynn, if you pull 7 first, that's the first person on that list in District, say District 1, that'd be the first person on that list.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And as I put these numbers, I had some questions as to, are you gonna put all the numbers in and things like that? If the board's willing to do so, it'll take me just a second. As we put the numbers in, I'll read the applicant as well. District 1, extremely low and low.
You gonna read them before you put them in?
Yes, sir. I want everyone to see that the numbers are going into the bag, sir.
Oh, you're just gonna read the numbers?
I'm just gonna read the numbers, and that way they'll know they're all in there. 101, Carol Finch. 103, Nellie Gray. 126, Grady Ray McDaniel. 162, Steve McLemore. 106, Cheyenne DeWitt. 121, Donna Stitz. 161 is Danny Burns. 17, Houston Bennett. 36, Shelley Adkison. 47, Sherry Lanier. 57, Deborah MacLeod. 60, Martha Wages. 49, Kristy Linton. 99, Michael Ward. 21, Betty Sue Britt Capps. Number 94, James Rish.
Talk about real quick. There's five in red right there that says non-eligible. And you put there.
We are going to verify and triple-verify that they are not eligible prior to making the awards.
Which I said at the beginning, we're gonna draw all the numbers and we're gonna look them over one more time. As you well know.
Yes, sir.
There was one we found already.
Yes, sir.
All right, this is District 1, very low.
Yeah, extremely low and very low.
Very low, okay.
Okay, are we ready?
Now you're going with District, uh?
No, 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 they're gonna draw.
Okay, go ahead.
Ms. Shirley's gonna draw the numbers out, she's gonna read the number, and Ms. Lanier's gonna make the notes.
126. 57. 121. 21. 103. 60. 106. 99. 161. 17. 49. 36. 162. 101. 94. 47.
That's it. This is District 1, very low.
Yes, this is District 1 Low.
All right, this is District 1 Low now.
Yes, sir. Number 2, Angela Connor. Number 6, Sherry Ferry. Number 14 is Dawn Reeth. Number 44, Stephen Askew. Number 55, Virginia Stafford. Number 79 is Cassandra Whittington. Number 98, Melissa Smiley. 167, David Hunter Causey Jr. 168, Amber Nicole Norris. 88, Mabel Gray Ward. 109, Bradley Senior. And number 156 is Jesse Armstrong.
Number 88. 44. 109. 168. 98. 9. Oh, is it 6?
6, yeah.
79. 167. 156. 14. 55. 2.
District 1, moderate and workforce housing. Number 16, Roger Sylvester. 24, Heather Byrd. 72, Amanda Oliver. 74, Paul Williams. 78, James Dillon Ward. 80, Cole Garrett Harper. 113, David Doitt. Number 115, Summer Johns. 125, Brandy Whitfield. 146, Ashley Nicole Farrell. 147, Jade Gaskin Hatcher. 155, James Andrew Rouse III. Number 90, LaRue Huddleston. 144, Deborah Hurd. 63 is John Paul.
144. 113. 74. 125. 24. 16. 155. 90. 78. 72. 80. 63. 146. 115. 147.
That is all of your applications in District 1.
And just to emphasize, that's gonna be our number one thing and the least amount of money we have. That's what we wanted to focus on, was the moderate. We had 15 applicants, we can only fund six of those 15. So that's on the moderate. And that's gonna be in every district, that's gonna be your high category.
That will be if they all qualify.
If they all qualify, that's right.
District 2.
District 2, extremely low and very low. 153, James Dallas Vacy. Number 3, Shalina Dennis. 119, Edward Gaskin. 138, Ella Parsons. 151, Nicolette Hamm. 143, Elise Atkins. Number 4, Reba Chance. Number 7, Margaret Brogdon. 38, Carrie Andrews. 84. 38 Carrie Andrews, 84 Cora Quick, 48 Dwayne Stewart, 77 Rebecca Linton, 8 Sandy Knowles, 40 Louisa Matlock, 43 Amanda Yarrow, 56 Charles Scott Sr., 64 Catherine Jones, 108 Mary Lois Beatty, 164 Vinnie Baker.
43. 77. 64. 38. 164. 143. 108. 153. 48. 7. 40. 56. 3. 4. 119. 138. 8. 151. 84.
District 2 low. Philip Kemp, number 62, number 83 Gary Joe Adlerzer, number 18 Mickaduke, 20 Shelton Andrews, 42 Bettina Yarrow, 45 Dolores Sylvester, 53 Clarissa Fryer, 68 Morgan Fisher, 71 Cecilia Myers, 160 Terrence Dion Hand, and 92 is Amy Williams.
42. 20. 71. 62. 83. 160. 93.
93 or...
Something not right.
I think that's my 93 that I was missing and the other one, I don't know how...
That's the number we've been missing all day and made another number to make it up.
Uh-oh.
53.
Hold on just a second, sure.
68. 18. 92. 45.
Just for everyone's notice, there were 11 applications and we drew 11 numbers.
Yes.
Sorry about that, we got stuck. I knew that's when we'd find it. District 2 moderate and workforce, number 39 Terry Myers Jr., number 76 Jeremy Riley, number 37 Delois Stacy, number 11 Christian Rich, number 23 Bryce Allen Armstrong, and number 100 is Jerick Davidson.
Number 100. 37. 76. 11. 23. 39.
That's it. Joe, Mr. Chairman, back on, let's go back over here to this moderate. We have 53 and a 52, now clarify that.
Where are you at?
Uh, on the low.
That's the one number you'd lost.
The lost number.
93.
93, number 93.
Oh, 93.
Yeah.
It's not on there, it was stuck to the numbers, we went through them like three times, trying to find the number we were in.
Hold on, I'll find where it's at.
Let's just get it...
It's in one of these other ones because we made another number.
Alright, 92, 93, so we good there.
I had it as number 7 on District 2 low and I just crossed it out from 53.
Good deal, alright, that's good. Yeah, that's good.
I had it as number 7 on the District 3 low. We disqualified it because it wasn't valid, it wasn't in the box, and 53 was the next number drawn.
Okay, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
District 3 extremely low and very low, 166 Nicole Young, 31 Clay Seer, number 30 Joe Taylor.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
166. 31.
Come back and do it like... 30.
30.
District 3 low, number 69 Jennifer Hayes, 86 Linda Killian, 124 Ara Bruckner, and 148 is Lydia Burrows.
86. 124. 69. And 148.
District 3 moderate and workforce, number 32 Mary Quick, 66 Bethany Hastings, 97 Crystal Fallen, 127 Linda Diane Branton, 145 Jessica Schweikert, and 142 is Kelly Simpson.
97. 66. 142. 127. 32. And 145.
That's all for District 3. District 4 extremely low and low, very low, 87 Molly Garrett, 81 Mamie Hayes, 150 Arneisha Harris, 163 Alexa Strickland, 41 Sabrina Brooks, 152 Carla Bell, 58 Amy Cannington, 5 George Bryant III, 28 Betty Gordon, 46 Ara Bowie, 59 Lena Morning, 82 Latrina McNeil, 130 Felicia Davis Quinn, 140 Arthur Harris, 165 Steven Gathers.
152. 163. 81. 5. 165. 140. 150. 82. 28. 59. 46. 58. 130. 87. 41.
District 4 very, uh, excuse me, District 4 low, number 25 Lynette Bailey, 51 Brenda Fisher, 1 Mario Fidel Larry, 22 Brittany Brown, 33 Isaac Thomas Jr., 34 Elnor Cannon, 67 Jennifer Hayes, 95 Alex Lee Nos, 96 June Renee Smiley, 111 Latonya Bailey, 120 Katherine Clark, 122 Carolyn Sims, 128 Sherri Lovetta Bolden, 131 Sherri Smith Pounceley, 132 Dejon Alexander Williams, 158 Brianna Bryant, 29 Geraldine Lewis, 52 Michael Tiller, 65 Patricia Watts, 75 Edith Best, 85 Annie Grace Granger, 91 Lula Cherry, 112 Colorado Jones, 118 May Eligant, 141 Dennis MacLeod, and 149 Shannon Winfield.
96. 33. 22. 112. 52. 128. 29. 131. 75. 51. 132. 122. 95. 25. 1. 111. 65. 158. 67. 141. 85. 120. 34. 149. 118. 91.
District 4 moderate workforce, number 70 Garrett Garland, 26 Chelsea Griffith, 54 Amanda Thomas, 107 Caroline Gregory, 114 is Norma Carey, 117 Yvette Quinn, 133 Julius Witton Strickland, 154 Joseph Foxworth Jr., 157 Sidney Harris, 136 Wesley Ramsey Jr., 159 Marjorie Peters, and 139 Letitia Daniels.
157. 136. 159. 117. 139. 26. 154. 133. 107. 70.
Seventy. One fourteen. Fifty-four. In District five, we had no applications for extremely low or low. In the low category. Anna Lisa Childress, number fifteen. Number twenty-seven, Doreen Mork. Fifty, Melissa Hanlon. Eighty-nine, Ernest Tyler Warley. One oh-four, Kristen Brown. One oh-five, Stephanie Watson. One sixteen, Brandy Lynn Price. One twenty-nine is Elizabeth Stanlin. Twelve, Gary Joe McCrone. Nineteen, Ron Rudolph. And one seventy, Evan Brumbaugh. Number twelve. One twenty-nine. Eighty-nine. One sixteen. Twenty-seven. One oh-four. Fifteen. One seventy. Fifty. Nineteen. One oh-five. District five, moderate and workforce. Ten, Joel Blessing. Thirty-five, Kendall Hicks. Sixty-one, Clayton Raffield. Ninety-three, April Botterford. That was the one that was the duplicate we made the extra ticket for. One oh-two is Michael Henderson. One thirty-four, Erin Bush. One thirty-seven, Melanie Deanne Wilder. One twenty-three, Mitchell Bullington. One thirty-five, Roy Nicole Garrett, Roy Cole Garrett, sorry. And one ten is Justin Cothran. One thirty-five. Ninety-three. Thirty-five. One twenty-three. Sixty-one. One thirty-four. One thirty-seven. One oh-two. Ten. One ten. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, let me say one quick thing before we get any further along.
Yes, sir.
Again, if you think this wasn't a monumental task to do, you should come on down and try some with us. I'm the one that asked to do it, and I appreciate that. Ms. Lanier and I have done our very best. We will provide each of you by Close the Business Monday with an updated list according to the numbers that were drawn. Please match them against your list that you made today, just in case, because we are human.
Yes, sir.
I do want to say two quick things. Number one, I was told that I either needed to wear a Santa Claus suit or a Grinch suit today. And I couldn't figure out which one to wear, and I knew half of each wouldn't look good, so I borrowed this pink armband right here. And what I want to tell you about that is, real quick, that of course is signifying breast cancer awareness, and we all need to continue to support research in that, and we need to pray for those that are going through any types of cancer. Ms. Lanier and I have seen four different veterans this week with terminal cancer, y'all. Four veterans this week, one of them at lunchtime today. It's tearing our heart out. Cancer's the, one of the main killers. But please, thank you for allowing us to do it. We will be prepared to go forward based on recommendations from y'all in the future.
Thank you, sir. I want to take this opportunity to thank you, Mr. Joe Paul, you and Lynn. We appreciate the work and time and effort you guys put in. Thank you, Ms. Jenkins, for taking time out of your business schedule and drawing for us. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Did it twice as fast as I thought you would, so that was good. Very efficient, very efficient. I don't want you to make a decision today, but going forward, you each got a million dollars. It was split basically three ways in that million-dollar pot. We have some set-asides that we have to meet that we didn't necessarily want to meet. We wanted to put more in moderate, but, for example, District five had no very low or extremely low. We had to spend thirty percent of the overall pot on that. So, going forward, Mr. McCrone may want to spend his entire forty percent, add a hundred thousand dollars, say, to his moderate pot, because he's got more people, he's got ten people and enough money for about five, to increase that pot to do another two. But District four and District two are way short in some of that very low and low. So we need to talk about, in the next meeting, or maybe a special meeting prior to it, how we're going to move these monies around to get our set-asides, our thirty, our thirty, and then, of course, you want the forty at the end. And if you can give us some direction going forward, how you want to do that. Same in District three. Everybody needs more moderate money. But the requirements are that we spend a certain amount on the thirty and thirty, on the extremely low, very low, and whatnot. I think we're going to be fine with our set-asides for the disabled, but going forward. The other thing, Joe and I talked about it briefly going forward, is how we're going to handle the implementation of the program going forward. And if we're going to split it up, or we're going to do it all in-house, what we're going to do, because they're going to be overloaded doing eighty or ninety or a hundred projects. We talked about doing maybe the trailers in-house and farming out the rest, or maybe doing it all in-house still. But we'll need a decision on that too at the next one. So maybe a special meeting prior to the next regular meeting, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. But again, they'll get some of these things sorted out, finish the qualifying process, and hopefully be an early Christmas present for some of these folks to start getting, see a trailer come.
Also, we need to, real quick, we need to talk about, at that special meeting also, about the contractors. With some of this rehab stuff, we're going to probably need some more contractors, see if we can bring some more in and qualify some more. If you, you okay with that, Mr. Paul? Because I'm pretty sure we're going to have more work than we need.
Based on the contractors we have now and the response I've had, I could use a ton. Whatever your direction is as a board, Mr. Chairman, and commissioners, we will go out for contractor bids and, you know, be able to go from there.
Okay. I appreciate it, sir. Board members, you got anything from Mr. Hammond? All right, Mr. Paul, go ahead, sir.
Real quick, I think it's the first thing in your packet. This was kind of a, just a screw-up on my part. We put it in the budget but did not get a formal vote. I think we talked about it on the insurance committee. Commissioner McDaniel's the chairman of that, but we agreed on the insurance committee's side to make the recommendation to the board, and we put it in the budget to increase the stipend by twenty-five dollars a month. When you increase the health insurance match, the people that get stipends that opt out of the insurance that either covered through their spouse or covered through military or whatnot, we need a formal vote of the board to do that at twenty-five dollars a month.
All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
The next item, and I spoke to the chairman about this tomorrow, is the deadline. We had had a request early on to turn in our top ten items, and we did that a month or so ago to both our Senator and Representative Schof's office. Two of those items, we prioritized, and I got it approved, the chairman, I need the board to approve for our SEABR request. One was a hundred thousand dollars for Beacon Hill Park to help finish that off, and the other was continued drainage and debris cleanup, ditches and whatnot. And I don't have a copy of that, it was one, but it was two million on that request. So we need formal board approval to submit those, please.
Okay. All right, yeah, we definitely.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I got a motion by Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passes five and oh.
You bring it up. Warren's got something he needs to bring up on the landfill that I've discussed with the chairman.
Yeah, just briefly, Mr. Chairman, we need a waiver of your flow control ordinance for DEP. They're cleaning out some of the inland waterways that's actually, most of it's in their buffer preserve. We've been asking them, trying to figure out how we're going to get all that out of there. DEP had taken the initiative. They had issued a contract previously, and so all we're needing is just a waiver of our flow control so they can use their contract to haul that debris out of the county.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCrone.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McDaniel. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh. You still got the forms?
I think everything else can wait, Mr. Chairman. If we could, I'll just coordinate with you about a potential special meeting prior to our next regular meeting.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Schof has, Representative Schof? He gone? Okay, all right. All right, any other thing? I want to take this opportunity to thank everybody for coming out. We really appreciate you coming out to the, to this.